Good evening. Welcome to the Wednesday, October 12th, 2016 meeting of the school committee. At this time, we'd ask that you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which has our stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, every being, and justice for all.
I'm going to ask will we observe a moment of silence for our troops serving overseas? Thank you and good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Members?
Good evening.
Several things to report this evening and several updates. I did want to start with the assessment report, which has come out. I want to kind of walk folks through this as this is a change from the previous eighteen to twenty years when we've done only MCAS. This past year, the state gave us the option to do either MCAS or the PARC test, which is considered to be more rigorous. And at the time, the PARC test was considered to be the replacement for the MCAS test. In the months that followed with the change in administration, a new direction was taken by the state and they decided not to adopt fully the PARC test, but rather to do an MCAS 2.0 next year, which will include a large percentage of PARC-like items, but will also keep some, a smaller percentage of the old MCAS or new MCAS questions. So they considered this past year to be a hold harmless year. We took it as an opportunity for our kids to kind of be exposed to these more rigorous questions and the results are in, including with kind of a crosswalk back to MCAS. To look at the PARC in isolation would not really help anyone to understand how we've done compared to previous years, but because of the crosswalk they gave us, we were able to do so. The first thing I want to show folks is the CPI, the Composite Performance Index, that is, that you'll see in your packet. And you saw, we saw, we made gains again this year, strong gains, particularly in English Language Arts, as well as in math. So both, both content areas showed strong growth. And this CPI, our Composite Performance Index, is really the, the single gauge which helps us navigate between PARC and MCAS. And so that number was, those numbers coming in were very strong and just a real testament to what the teachers and the kids and the hard work that's being done by the schools. So that was great. As I said, they gave us kind of a crosswalk to do proficiency rates and what we saw was kind of a real strong jump in English Language Arts proficiency. English has been tougher for us to move the needle on. We've, we've shown some consistent moderate growth, but this was a year where we had larger growth. If you look at the chart, you see we started a few years ago at forty-one, then we stayed at forty-one, went up to forty-four percent proficient, then to forty-five percent proficient. And by the calculations this year, they have us at fifty-one percent, so that's a six-point jump. Mathematics also had a sharp uptick from forty-four to forty-nine. So this was a real strong year for the district. There were some folks I know who asked if the receivership had run out of steam, but it looks like the teachers and kids have a long way to go and are showing that they can perform at high levels. So just very proud of what's taken place, recognizing we're going to go into this MCAS 2.0 system next year and that may reset the needle completely. It's not clear yet if we're going to start at zero, if they're going to wipe the slate clean and we're going to start all over, or if they're going to kind of continue on with what you see here, kind of the historical proficiency. So as soon as we find that out, we'll let you know. I sent a thank you note out to all staff members in Lawrence recently and included in that some of our National Arts Award winners, because I think it's important to remember while standardized testing is important, it is only one piece of the puzzle. And we believe deeply in arts and enrichment here. And unfortunately, at this time, not everyone agrees that those content areas are as valuable. But I think, I hope, that you've seen the commitment from this district at least, for the arts, for our children, things that may not show up on an MCAS test, but they show up in life. To that end, a reminder that the Abbott School is putting on the Addams Family Musical Comedy Performance this week. I think they have a performance right now, but they also have performances tomorrow, I think in the morning and evening. So you can find that on the website as always, but just wanted to point that out. Another way to look at the data is by looking at Level One and Level Two schools. When we started many years ago, we had one Level One school and two Level Two schools, for a total of three. Four or five years later, that number is now twelve, including ten Level One schools and two Level Two schools. And if you want to look at the schools and the breakdown, that's on the next page. This year, you saw Spark Academy exit out of Level Four status and into Level One. And two schools at the high school, HHS and HLD, move into Level One status, joining the Community Day Arlington, Gilmet, Leahy, Partham, Tarbox, Uplandard, Wetherby Schools as Level One, and Frost Middle School in South Lawrence East are Level Two schools. So we're seeing the trend in the right direction. We're seeing our students outperforming many other districts in Massachusetts and we're happy about that, but we recognize there's more work to do. Just to kind of round things out, a reminder that the graduation rate has been improving significantly from about fifty percent in 2011 to almost seventy-two percent now. We anticipate that number will probably stay flat this year and then spike up next year. And the dropout rate, probably the same thing. We've, we're at historical levels. We think we'll probably remain there this year and drop again next year as more of our programs get put in place. So overall, you know, a healthy report card from the school district with the recognition that there's more work to do. Folks have asked about English Language learners and I did just want to put something out there, but we had significant growth from almost all of our schools on access testing for our kids. And that allows the school district to get more points. When they look at a district, they want to see the health of kids that are coming new to the district and how they're doing. And the proficiency rates shot up dramatically for our second language learners this year. Typically, we provide you with much more information and we're hoping to do that. But it's going to take, because some of this stuff came out late and because there is a conversion chart, we're trying to get that conversion done school by school. The state, unlike years past, didn't do anything like that for us, and so we have to do those conversions. And what I'm giving you is the big picture and we'll be able to give you kind of a more school by school analysis probably by next month. I don't know if there's any questions, Mayor?
Yeah, I'd like to just start real quick. Looks like a great year. Congratulations to you and the staff on this. So where does that put us for together, Level One or Level Two schools district-wide? How many?
Twelve total. Ten Level Ones and two Level Twos.
So twelve and we have, do we have twenty-four total schools?
Approximately, yeah.
So half the schools are either Level One or Level Two?
I think we, yeah, depending on how you code some of our programs, but almost half the schools are Level One and Level Two.
Okay. You know, and this year was a hybrid MCAS PARC or was it?
It was just, it was the PARC in grades three to eight and the high school, all high schools have stayed taking the MCAS test, which is what's made this a little bit more challenging for everyone to try to piece all this together. But at the highest level, what you're seeing is, you know, strong improvement in all of the schools.
And the reason why I ask that is because you said maybe you're going to start from zero next year if you go a hundred percent PARC. So there's going to be no way we can compare the performance of this year compared to next year?
It's unclear, Mr. Mayor. I don't, you know, I, we haven't got the final word. What I will say is that we've been migrating towards these new standards for several years and that we think we're going to hit the ground running. And that even if they start the needle at zero, we think we're, we're in good position to not just maintain our good standing, but to actually do better, even in a hold harmless year like next year is supposed to be.
The, the one chart that you guys did last year and the year before that I thought was helpful was us compared to other gateway cities?
Yeah.
You guys going to be able to do that in the next set of deck or, because that one's great. I mean, I think that it showed how much we've jumped.
So I'm not exactly sure. We're going to be able to get you something. We don't have the same level of access with that crosswalk. They give us the crosswalk just for us that we have to manipulate. They don't allow us to do it for other districts. Now, districts are talking to see if everyone's going to share their data and some people are and some people don't want to. But we're going to try to get you as much information as possible. I'm actually scheduled to be at the department on Monday and I'm going to ask, I mean, I'm assuming they have to do, every year, they kind of rank districts, who's in the bottom ten percent. Obviously with the charter question coming out in November, that may be a moot point but, or not. But this district moved out of the bottom ten percent two years ago, which meant that it was no longer eligible to accept any more charters in the city.
Yeah.
And so we went from the worst performing district in Massachusetts. I think we leapfrogged forty or fifty districts. So we were no longer eligible. And so this, this new initiative would say, well, I won't get into the politics of it.
That's informative.
That they're changing the goalposts from time to time. So we'll see if that happens or not. But that's where we're at.
Mrs. Mariano?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I'd like, I'd also like to echo the mayor and congratulate the youth superintendent and the, the staff for these significant gains on the, on the testing. Also, I'm very, very interested in how we feared with the gateway cities too. That was going to be my follow-up question.
Okay.
You know, we were like second last year, if I remember correctly, in math and I'm not, I don't remember how the ELA feared. I'm really interested to see how we did in that cluster of cities.
Well, you know, we'll certainly endeavor to get you as much information as we can.
Appreciate it.
I mean, I can tell you, off the record as a parent of where my children attend school, that we beat my children's district on the PARC test in mathematics for the first time in history.
Nice.
Oh, that's good.
But...
I mean, good for us.
Good for you.
Maybe I shouldn't say that.
It's a good thing that that child has a great home life.
Yeah. Yes, maybe.
Thank you.
Okay.
Dr. Rivera?
I just have a couple of quick questions. The graduation rate and the dropout rate, does that reflect regular education and special education students?
All students.
All students? And then the other question is, are there any different strategies that the district utilized this year that was different from years past, such as like test prep programs or anything like that?
We have done the similar program. Ms. Correa, who's been working on this for several years, has done a lot of great work around outreach to kids that have dropped out and re-engaging them. And every kid is different, so every kid kind of gets a different menu or treatment, if you will. When I first came, some people on this board will remember, we had a couple of students that were literally one class away from graduating and no one had told them. And so we kind of reached out to them, got them their class and got them across the stage for graduation. That's an extreme example, but you know, we have kids right now, you know, fifth-year seniors that are trying to do online coursework to, to get, you know, caught up and to get across that finish line. It's a, it's an ongoing battle and we're looking for better ways to track our students. We sometimes are at a disadvantage because we don't, we're not always able to track our students and where they go. And so on something like the dropout rate, it won't be counted against us if a kid enrolls at another school. But if we don't know they're enrolling in a school out of state, we get penalized for it. So we, we've tried to step up our efforts around that. And, and the other thing is, I mean, that's kind of a reactive policy that we've done. My hope is, when you look at what happened in the ninth grade academy this past year, where more students stayed on track and fewer kids were failing one or more course, courses, you guys might remember that data from, was it last meeting or two meetings ago? Last meeting, I guess. And over the last spring, that that will help us have to do fewer kind of outreach to kids that have dropped out, but we're keeping our kids on track instead of being reactive. So we're trying to be more proactive and get our kids across that finish line.
Okay. Thank you.
Congratulations to the student body and the faculty and staff. I know you're working on your end on getting some sort, garnishing up some sort of information. Is there a particular timeline on when we will see some of this?
We'll get you definitely more information by the next meeting. We're going to get you as much as we can get.
Excellent.
Because this is such a transition year and things are in flux and there's actually two different tests being administered and unlike in years past, we don't have the same access to other districts. It's much more complicated, but we're working on it. So we'll get you what we can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I would just encourage you and the staff to figure out something with this next year thing because I, what you'd hate to do is have them start, start at zero and then not have anything to compare for the success of the district going forward, especially if you can leave at the very least, the concept of Level One schools. I think if they, if you can figure out a way to continue to grow that, not grow in the sense that you have to, you already hit twelve, but so that you can see if there is a growth in that, that you can make, you can point to it, at the very least that.
Yeah, I know. We're, we will be lobbying for such a thing. I mean, I think we struggled this past year with the decision to do the PARC test because we wanted that continuity of test scores. And only after we were kind of promised that there would be a conversion chart and the fact that it looked at the time like the state was going PARC full bore, did we elect to take that test. I think it will be helpful for our students to see those type of questions. But we have to also recognize that politics are what they are and things changed and now our kids will see both PARC and MCAS questions. The good news is our kids have been exposed to both. The bad news is, who knows what the format is going to be going forward, if there will be kind of a ladder back to be able to compare scores or if they'll be kind of starting from ground zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Veterans Stadium update. I've asked Mr. Luchardi to come and speak. Come join us, Mr. Luchardi. He's the athletic director for the school. As some of you know, there was an outside organization that, you can come up here, Mr. Luchardi. I mean, you can go there, baby.
Sit in the spotlight.
There was an unfortunate incident where an outside organization did some damage to the track, very significant damage to the field and track and caused some of our student athletes to basically have no place to play. And Mr. Luchardi has made sure that our kids' games stay on track and he's been able to reschedule things. Obviously, this is not a school department matter, but it affects the schools because it affects our kids. And so we wanted to make sure that our kids had the least amount of disruption as possible. It's just an unfortunate incident that our kids had to go through. And so I just wanted Mr. Luchardi to speak briefly about what he's been able to do.
Just to give you a quick update, the teams that were affected were football, field hockey, and boys and girls soccer. And we were, I was able to reschedule probably twenty-five games, so they, they're going to play all their games now away at the opposing team's home field. And for practices, we've moved all our teams down to the South Lawrence East where everybody has a field to practice and to get ready for game. So, you know, basically, you know, we're getting through it.
Any questions on that from the group?
I would just add just to that, that I think that since the moment this happened, the city and the school department together have been resolute in making sure that those culpable for the things that happened that day pay their, their share of the damage and are held responsible. And, you know, we're going to do a full vetting of the processes the city took place to allow this to happen so that we make sure it doesn't happen again. But suffice it to say, we're in the middle of making sure that insurance companies and we may even have a lawsuit in mind, that everybody pays what they're supposed to. So we're not, we can't really get into the minutia of why didn't we do X, did we do Y? Why was X allowed and not Y? Because I think that right now, the real focus is on, on getting the people who did the damage to pay. And once we get that squared away, then we can have a great powwow about, you know, what we did and how we did it.
Yeah, we appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring Mr. Luchardi up to let people know that, you know, we've made arrangements for our kids to make sure that the seasons continue. That was all.
Any questions?
I just have a question. I don't know whether it's to you, Mr. Mayor, or to Jim or the superintendent. Is there a timeline when, you know, things will be repaired and hopefully the kids will be back on the track?
So we are fast track, this has been fast tracked. We did submit a proposal for, to the city council, for them to do an emergency authorization to pay to replace the field and the track. And that went before the city council. The last time, that's going to go before, before public hearing at the next city council meeting, I believe it's the eighteenth?
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth. We're encouraging folks to come if you want the practice to be replaced and the field to be replaced, to come and say that. You could also say that you're upset that it has to be replaced, but it's important for the council to take a vote to replace, to pay to replace it. Having the money in hand allows us, allows us to actually do the work, even though we expect fully for the insurance company to pay for it. But we can't really start the work. The businesses won't say, won't do it unless, we can't say, hey, this insurance company's going to pay for it. So we got to make sure we have money on hand and the fastest way to do that is to do what we have before the city council, which is a borrowing, emergency borrowing item. And I think we had somebody come through and do some work and they think they can get it done before, before Thanksgiving, but you know, you never know with weather and the way the work turns out.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Robles?
Yeah, good evening. I just want to apologize on everything that's transpired. And I know it's a tough transition for the student athletes, you know, for what they're going through, but I just wanted to know, how are they doing?
They're doing well. They're doing very well. And I think part of the reason is the coaches have just, they haven't made a big deal out of it and they've just gone along and gone, you know, gone to practice and getting, getting ready for the next game.
Just having that laser focus, yeah.
Yeah. And I think it's really helpful that the coaches have gone along and not made a big deal about it. I mean, it's just something that happens.
Right.
It's a good teaching lesson because bumps in the road happen in life.
Absolutely, absolutely. You good?
I was just going to ask.
It's Kastenayla.
Thank you. I was just going to ask on the timeline, is there any way that we can do something to get the community involved with the process of the remodel? Because I'm sure it's not going to be the exact same field, but just let the community feel some sort of, some sort of, some sort of...
Connection with it.
Connection with the track. Is there any way that we can get them involved?
I got to tell you, and I can, you guys can say something about it too, but I was really upset that day. We were all really kind of just angry. And it wasn't until I was sitting in headmaster Fiatto's office and one of the students came in and, you know, we just happened to be talking and she said, hey, you know, Ms. Fiatto, can I ask you a quick question? And I thought, Mr. Fiatto was going to say, oh, I'm talking to the mayor, can you wait outside? Mr. Fiatto said, what? And she said, is the, is the field clean? Can we play on the field? I kind of went over what had happened and where we were at and she said, well, a bunch of us want to know if we can help clean it up. And so there is this great energy out there to support the community, you know, not only from the, the school department, the Lawrence School District staff, family, alumni, but also from Central Catholic and surrounding towns and communities who feel the pain of these kids. And so the, the sad part about that is that, you know, maybe when we get the, when we do the, the turnover, we actually fix it, we can get people involved, but at the moment there is so, the insurance companies are involved and, you know, it's going to be a time where we can get people to come to that. But if you want to come on the eighteenth and just speak on why they should do the borrowing, that more than anything is really the most people can do. Again, you can be upset that this thing happened and that, but at the end of the day, if we don't do the borrowing at the next meeting, we won't, we won't be poised to do the fixing before, between now and, and November.
Thank you.
I think in closing, we'd just like to say anything...
Thank you.
...to expedite the process so our kids can get back on the field would be appreciated. On happier news, we were at the Frost the other day and we had visits from City Year, Optum Health, and the Boston Celtics, including Jay Crowder, Kelly Olenek, and Jaris Charenko, and Leon Po from the 2008 championship team. And they did a lot of work inside the school, painting, sprucing up outside the school. And they also redid the gym floor over at the Frost. I want to thank school committee woman, Mariano, for coming out. I know that's your neighborhood and I think it was a great day with a lot of happy families that have just been really appreciative of the Celtics and what they've done for that school. Frankly, I think this group knows that the Celtics have been an incredible partner in the work in Lawrence. Whether it's the computer lab they did at the Arlington Middle School or the brand-new gym they put in at the Bruce, I mean, they have been there with us almost every year doing a new project and we're just incredibly grateful for them. I think we have a short video.
Before you show the video, can you tell us what they actually did at the Frost? Because I think Chris was, I mean, some stuff they did with the floor, Brad. It's a lot of work, right? They just did the Frost.
So they did, they did the entire floor over and put in a state-of-the-art rubber flooring. They painted the entire gym. They did paint other walls inside the school. They did landscaping. Chris, what am I missing?
New curtain motors.
New curtain motors. I mean, there was...
Gym?
They probably had a hundred or more volunteers out just, you know, really getting the school in tip-top shape and just...
Just how much you think that was in total updates of the school? Rough?
Seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars.
Seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars is what the facility's doing.
And that's, that's just the material stuff. That's not...
That's all.
Nice. Great. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt them.
Hi, I'm Christopher Farzner, Director of Partnerships and Projects with City Year's Care Force. We're working today at the Robert Frost Elementary School in partnership with Celtics and Optum to actually do a regeneration and makeover of the school. We're working in both the elementary and the middle school side. We're doing a bunch of murals and inspirational quotes in all of the hallways. We're also putting up plywood murals to show some school pride with school logos, as well as some college pennants to make sure that we're giving that educational feel and really encouraging kids to graduate onto college.
Dave Hoffman with the Community Engagement Department at the Celtics, back at it here in Lawrence. Want to do our part to, to support them. Comes in a variety of different shapes and colors and today, we're going to be helping to beautify the school here at the Frost.
I'm John Patterson, Assistant Principal of the Frost Middle School. And on behalf of the entire staff at the Frost Elementary School and Frost Middle School and our administrative team, we would like to thank the Boston Celtics, Optum Health, City Year Group for all of the hard work and effort that they've put in into providing us with a new gym floor and with improving the aesthetic at the Frost Educational Complex. What do you say, kids?
So just a special day. I think they missed the video of the mayor going off the trampoline, but we'll get that for the next meeting.
Thank God.
We talked about the Addams Family production that's happening this week. If folks have a chance to stop in and see that, I think there's two shows tomorrow, so please check that out. It's on the website. At this time, we'd ask Amory Starnak to come up and talk about the MSBA update and where
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight, Superintendent. It's always nice to have to follow one of the toughest acts in the school district, so I appreciate that. I'm here tonight to talk to you about our updates with the MSBA. As you may remember, back in April, April 5th, we went before the city council seeking approval for three applications to the MSBA. One, the Arlington School HVAC project. The second is the boiler replacement at the North Common, which is this complex here. And third, producing a statement of interest for a new Oliver partnership school. We received word... statement of interest for a new Oliver Partnership School. We received word that unfortunately, we did not prevail in our HVAC at the Arlington School, but we will do that at another time. We did receive acceptance into the replacement boiler program here at this school. We are currently in the schematic phase design of that project, and we have gone before city council to seek approval of $1.5 million to help fund that. The majority of that money will be reimbursed through this MSBA grant that was approved. So, we are in the midst of that schematic design. It'll take us about a year to complete that. So, we're well on track in that project. The third project is a statements of interest for the Oliver Partnership School, and we are now going to, that's a little bit longer process. It's obviously a bigger project. And what happens next in that project is we are in a school assessment. So, the MSBA is coming out to the Oliver Partnership School on October 25th. They will be meeting with the co-leaders of the school, doing a visit, looking at some maintenance, taking a walk-around, having classroom observations and such. They'll be on-site for the day, and then they will go back, and then at some point, we will receive word whether or not we're accepted into that program. Once we're accepted into that program, similar to the boiler project, we would then have to go before city council to start with the schematic design. Once the schematic design is then, then we would have to go. So, that project is a little bit more incremental, and that's kind of where we're at on that. Do you have any questions?
Yes, just real quick, and then we'll pass it on. The HVAC for the Arlington School...
Yes.
I would just make, I think that we need to make application again for that this coming year. And part of the thing that I, I think that we, we miss in the application was this idea that the HVAC is part of the learning program. I think that's what they, you kept using, that this is important to the learning program. And the reason why that is here, I don't think we made the case, is that, A, we have a longer school day, and when we have the longer school day, we also have a longer school year. And we're, before, when we were out of school, before it got too hot to be in school, we're still in school. And now, we're back in school before it gets really cold. It's still hot. So, you're in school in August, when you used to be in school in late September or mid-September. And, you know, climate change, wherever we stand on the issue, is definitely shifting our ability to have kids in seats all day, and we're spending a lot of money on buying popsicles and ice cream and water to make sure our kids are well-kept cool. So, I think we can prevail on that issue, especially if we lean on the fact that we're a successful school district because we have a longer school year, and this is a school that would greatly benefit from it.
Thank you very much. We will make sure that I capture those quotes, and actually, I'll look for a statement from you to put in the application that might also help us, anything to tip us over the edge.
The other thing is, the CIP, just a report on the, the city council did approve the capital improvement plan.
That is correct.
And in that is $500,000 for boilers across the district. And I know that you and your team are going to do an analysis on which boilers would best benefit from that $500,000.
That is correct. Once the boilers go up online, which we're in the process of now turning those boilers on, once we turn them on, we find the boilers that are more in need of some tender loving care, and we will address those ones first, because we need our boilers up and running for our students all year. And we appreciate the city council's support on that. We know that was a big ask, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, I would encourage everyone to send a note to the city council thanking for their vote, because it did pass unanimously.
I will do that. That, thank you. I appreciate that feedback.
Any questions? Ms. Mariano?
Emery, you said that for this building, you're in the process of doing a schematic.
Yep.
It's going to take a year.
So...
Correct?
When? Yep. Because when you're in any MSBA project, you still have to go through the whole phase project. So, it, it's not like, oh, we can decide, oh, we're going to replace this boiler. You have to go through the schematic design process and use one of their architects and one of their vendors. You know, they have, as you know, they have a list of approved vendors, and then we have to go to purchase it.
All right. My follow-up was, I believe there's only one boiler operating in this building?
There's actually two boilers.
Okay.
Two of the four.
And if we get hit with the winter like we did last year, how dependable are those boilers for this building?
Two years ago.
I'm glad to hear with the capital improvement plan...
Right.
There's money there. Should those boilers need, you know, repair or ultimately replacement? Who knows?
So, both of these, both the HVACs were done under priority five, I believe, which is the repair and placement, because they are no longer being able to service. So, we do recognize that, but unfortunately, it does take time. And the, and the issue is, is you want to do it right, and you also want to buy the most efficient equipment that you can, so that you're purchasing something that's going to last us for 30 to 40 years.
All right. So, this year is the schematic. Then what's the next step?
The next step will be purchasing it and then hiring the person to install it. It's, it does take quite a bit of time.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And what we found is going to, again, we, the city has gone a long time without doing capital improvements. And so, what we found is, like, it's not enough just to have the money to fix it. You have to have an engineer actually go through and figure out how they're going to make it connect into the building...
Right.
...into the building systems and connect into the electric, electricity in the building. So, you know, it may only cost $1 million to do one thing, or $500,000 to do one thing, but if you don't have 10% for designing it and making sure it plugs in right, you really don't have anything, you're really not doing much. It's basically the final mile. So, the, the reimbursement for the, for the boilers for this, is such a big system here in the, at the North Common Education Center, that is going to take some engineers to come in and say, hey, what's the best way to connect these things?
That's absolutely correct. That's what the schematic design phase, and that is included in the pot of the Million Five, and it is also eligible for reimbursement.
Yeah. And so, that's going to be great. And we think at the end of the day, that some school districts gets, get as, as low as 60% reimbursement, but we think we can get as high as 80%, given that the state has a role, not only in the schools, but also in the, in the city side as well. So, we're...
We typically are benefit from a higher reimbursement than most of the surrounding communities.
So, we're excited about that.
Thank you.
Any others? Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Final item on the agenda before we move to questions and public participation, future mask training. I understand that folks came out for the school committee training recently, and it was a good development session, and that I think there's some more to be done, smaller sessions. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor or Ms. Mariano?
Yeah, I think we had a couple of sessions left to do.
And then they said the last one would probably be super intense evaluation.
Yeah. And so, I think one of the things that we discussed was because some, such varying schedules, that we'll do an email around to people for a couple of dates. And they've been working well so far, so we're anxious to do them. If you want to start this week, an email, this gives us, just pick a date in November, and we'll just start there.
Did I hear folks might want to do it before or after the regular scheduled school committee meeting, or is that not...
This is a suggestion of...
Oh, the mask people suggested that?
Yeah.
I don't know how long the training, is it a shorter training, Joan?
I think they said shorter. This last one was two hours, so I believe he might have said an hour. That's something, you know, if you want your folks to have a discussion and have...
You know, I don't know how everybody else is feeling, and we can maybe offline have this discussion, but...
Fair enough.
I felt it was like good to be separate and apart, that we, we just focused on the subject matter at hand. And we all have crazy schedules. But let's start the email with a date, and if people, try to be as close as we can.
I think they had mentioned they were quite busy until, I think, after the [inaudible].
Yeah. So, just put that in an email form, and we'll, we'll get that around. Great.
Okay. Thank you. Any final questions, Mr. Mayor, before we move to public participation?
No, I'm good. Anybody else?
I'm good.
Thanks.
Okay. At this time, Mr. Marley, are you here?
Yes, sir. Good evening, honorable members. In starting the new academic year, we the proud parent and citizen are grateful for success and accomplishment of our public school. This great public school under the best leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh, the hero that rescue our, our public school. Our children forever remember the impact of the turnaround plan. Our public school, the best public school now, Lawrence Public School with more highest school graduate, more MCAS improvement, are on the way to, to be the best public school in the nation. The gift of our public education are making our new generation ready for better future. With the best leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh, our proud city, the city of immigrant has risen up again. Our proud citizens support their teachers and their wonderful union. Eighty-three thousand citizens support their teachers. We appreciate their hard work and their sacrifices. Now, for the first time in the history of Lawrence Public School, we have the best family resource center that bring parents and the school staff together. New learning high school, new Lawrence High School is one of the best high school in our nation. For the first time in the history of our public school, we have the most focused budget for our public school. We are proud as the citizens support our public school and the teachers. Let's have the best academic year possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marley. Is that all, Joan?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor, would you make a motion to close, please?
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Second, I mean, is there a second? Second, and all those in favor? Aye. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.